The light's on.
All right, I would like to bring us back to order and to state that we just came out of non-public.
Madam Chair, I'll move to seal the minutes to the non-public meeting until such time as a majority of the board feels it is wide approved to unseal them with the exclusion of that information which must be divulged to the bookkeeper in order for HR matters.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
If we could now stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for All right, our first item, the guests were unable to make it for our rescheduled meeting, so we are skipping over item A. Our second item is the Gale Library Trustees.
Do we have mics tonight or no?
You have a mic right there.
Oh, we do, okay. This is gonna slip. Okay, good evening. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Lynn Cam. I'm the chairperson of the Gale Library Trustees. We had recently sent you a memo regarding the return of excess library payroll funds. Can you hear me? I guess good.
Yep.
Okay, basically, I'll try to paraphrase this and read some of it. I don't know if there's anybody who hasn't read it, or anybody else in the audience may not be aware of it. But basically what we're trying to do here tonight is to follow up on our comments at the budget hearing review, budget review hearing, regarding the return of excess library payroll funds to the general fund of the town of Newton. Now, New Hampshire RSA 202A 11-3, the powers and duties of library trustees states the trustees have the authority to expend all monies raised and appropriated by the town or city for library purposes and shall direct that such monies be paid over by the town or city treasurer pursuant to a payment schedule as agreed to by the library trustees and the selectmen or city council. The library appropriation of, for the budget in 219 is $128,496. This was the town budget that was voted on and approved by the townspeople. The town held back $96,571 for that appropriation to administer payroll to library staff. Any remaining funds at the end of the calendar year are still part of the library appropriation and should be made accessible to the library trustees. According to the RSA cited above, RSA 202A 11-3, it is the library trustees' power and duty to expend the monies appropriated for the town library, or at least have access to the funds to determine a course of action. In New Hampshire, public libraries come under the direction of the charitable trust unit of the Department of Justice. The trustees contacted Thomas Donovan, who's director of the charitable trust unit at the New Hampshire Department of Justice regarding this issue. His response included the following, and I quote, "You might talk to your selectmen about RSA 202A 11-3. The library trustees spend all funds raised and appropriated for library purposes, so if there's any money left over for library payroll, it should be available for other library spending. While it is common for a library staff to be paid as town employees and payroll administered by town staff, the excess funds attributable to the library should remain to be spent by its trustees." I hope this is helpful. It was signed by Thomas J. Donovan. Based on the above, before, I would just add to this too, that the library trustees also got a legal opinion from New Hampshire Municipal Association. And basically Stephen Buckley, the lawyer, NHMA, he basically cited the same legal statute that I've read to you twice. But based on all of this information, what we're here tonight to do is request that any excess payroll funds be returned to us to spend on library purposes. This has been the case for many years, and we see no reason to change this pattern. In fact, this is what really should happen under the RSA that we've stated. Going back to 2008 and before that, and this is why I only have information from 2008, since the three of us, none of the three of us were active on the board prior to 2008. So going back to 2008, we always got money back, excess salary funds from the town. There was one exception to that, when there was a year in 2015, I think there were 27 pay periods, so we actually had to pay back money to the town to be able to pay payroll. When the town holds back salary money, the payroll funds, we don't have the opportunity to spend those funds, and we are responsible for expending those funds. This is part of our appropriation. What we really want to do here is conform to the law that governs us, the statute that I've cited. So again, what I'm doing is requesting, the three of us, not just me, but the Board of Trustees, is requesting that any excess payroll funds be returned to us at the end of the year. Well, usually we get a check in January, so that we can spend those funds on library purposes. I mean, we don't really know how much will be left until the last pay period, and I think that's in the latter part of December. So we have no way of knowing what will be available to us. So there may be an excess. One year we had to return money because there were 27 pay periods, and we weren't aware of that. So we really can't even spend those funds. We don't have access to them during the year.
I think we're good here.
Okay.
Now, I can say that I think there was a little bit of confusion about what was heard at the budget workshop. However, we do still have some clarifications that we are gonna need from the trustees. Has nothing to do with what's left from payroll going to the library trustees to expend between now and the end of the year. You are absolutely correct. That does go to the library. It's under their purview because it is within the budget total for the library. So the bookkeeper has been informed today.
Okay.
So that's a non-issue at this point.
Okay.
However, the confusion came to the, any funds not spent by the library should be returned to the town. And that's the thing that doesn't seem to be happening. Okay, now, and again, so what we really need from the library to ensure that our auditing of our reports is accurate is we need to see, basically, an itemized or a line item report at the end of the year. What we are basing our information on is what is provided to us for the town budget report and what is reported on the MS 636. The expended amounts are not matching between the two. So I would love to get together with someone on the Board of Trustees, review what we found, and see where the discrepancy is and where it occurred. Okay? Because it could just be a typo, it could be an error on our part, it could be an error on the trustees' part. We don't know. But just so you know, based on the numbers that are in the town report, so you could even do the same research, if you go to the town, each town report for the last 10 years, and you look at what the town budget report has for the library and what the 636 has for the library, you will see a difference of $10,000 for those 10 years.
So you're not talking just salary funds?
No, I'm talking the appropriation versus the expenses.
Okay.
Not, I'm not talking payroll, because, like I said, the library budget is the library budget, totally under the purview of the library. But there is a discrepancy between what is reported on the budget and what is reported on the MS 636. And we have not, at least to my knowledge, in the five years that I've been here, seen any money come back to the town that was not expended from the library.
Well, I think it's because our budget is very tight, and we usually expend all of our funds. The payroll, obviously, we don't know until the end of the year.
No, I understand, and that's why I said I'd be willing to sit with someone else, you know, to just review these numbers and.
No, I think our treasurer would be happy to do that. Sure, go ahead.
I'm Catherine Asser of the treasurer. I'm not aware of an MS 636. It's never a form that we've ever filled out.
It's a DRA or DOR form, so.
I have no knowledge of that form.
It's the operating budget. It's in the town report. That's what we fill out.
Okay, well.
So that's why I said we need help from the library to understand where these discrepancies are.
Yeah, because this is the first time I've ever heard of a $10,000 difference in anything. And I've been treasurer since 2012. My books have always gone to the auditors. I've never had a comment from the auditors that something didn't match, so I would be interested in talking to you at a later date about that.
Perfect, thank you.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Anne Banks. I'm the secretary of Board of Trustees of Gale Library. Who is responsible for filling out that 636 form?
I am.
Nancy, and you fill it out based on?
It's what's appropriated for the library and what the expenditures are.
So it's the same information that gets reported on the town budget report, or it should be essentially what was appropriated, what was expended. It's what's reported to the DOR. Now, as far as the town report and budget reports, there are several years where it shows that the library expended more than what was budgeted, so.
Obviously, we can't do that.
Exactly, I'm like, you can't do that.
That may reflect the check that we get in January, which is town appropriation money, so I always account for it to show we did spend that money, we didn't keep it. That, you know, we can look at that later, and if that's the case.
Yeah, and that's why I said it's just gonna take review, you know, on both sides that have the information on both sides. We just don't have the library information. Okay?
Thank you.
And you wanted to say something?
I was just gonna ask, what's the differential that we're talking about in the salary line?
Oh, I'm not talking salary line.
No, no, the original impetus for the whole discussion.
Oh, are we aware of what the approximate return to the library is for the difference in payroll funds?
Not yet, because the pay period isn't over, the final pay period of the year. I can only guess.
Okay, so we don't know.
Okay.
Thank you. Any comments from you, Matt?
Nope.
All right, then we are good. All right, let's move on to the next item. Sprinkler system update on the fire station. Anyone have anything for that?
Sounds like there's November 7th, we're gonna be bringing in parties for that one, right?
November?
I'm sorry, January 7th.
January 7th?
Yep.
Okay, so we're gonna have a meeting on the 7th for that. Our next item, I don't even recall this being on there. Or D?
I would skip that.
Okay.
Till the, well, talk about it later, but we have tons of people.
Yep, not a problem.
Well, I was thinking you might wanna talk while the chief is here.
Gentlemen in the audience here, we have so many fired officers here. Is there something in particular? Chief?
I just say hi.
Yes, we do also have the chief from the police department here as well, but is there anything in particular that?
Budget.
So you're all here for the budget? All right, well, that is our next item, so please feel free and come up.
Evening, Madam Chair. I just have one quick question on the fire, on the sprinkler. That is January 7th, what time is the meeting?
Well, Diane can confirm. I know she was trying to get everybody back that needed to be here, but I don't know if you've had success.
As far as I know, everybody can be here to January 7th. I was gonna make it part of your regular meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it is a public meeting?
Yeah, oh yeah.
All the people can come here.
Yes.
The sprinkler system, thank you.
Yep, the sprinkler system is public, and the public definitely needs to hear.
With all due respect, I'm tired of getting beat up for something I shouldn't be.
No, it will be a public meeting, that's, so no worries there. Anyone who wants to listen, feel free to come and listen.
Thank you.
So you have a proposed budget?
Correct. There's, I'm here to answer any questions. I can explain the two increases. One of the increases I've been talking about probably for the past nine months, excuse me, and I believe in the meeting in October, when we discussed the future of three of the fire apparatus, I clearly stated that the vehicle repair had to go up to fix those three trucks.
In fact, if I recall correctly as well, I was suggesting that you do exactly that.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's why we did not finalize or accept the proposed budget at that time. It was to give you more time to.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You do have, I believe Diane sent out the breakdown also on what the trucks needed a while back. And I also, when I submitted the budget, broke it all down once again to the Board of Selectmen for public record, the need for the increases.
So I see increase for vehicle repairs, but not for maintenance?
Correct.
And we have?
A lot of, this past year, some of the vehicle repair ended up falling on the vehicle maintenance.
Chief, would you say that maintenance items are those things, it's the same thing every year, the standard maintenance routines?
Correct. Right now, as per the board's authorization, all the vehicles, the two engines, the two tankers, they all meet NFPA standards. So that's what the majority of the maintenance, plus oil changes on the pickup truck, the Tahoe, the ambulance, et cetera. So it is routine maintenance. What's costing is when the three oldest apparatus go in for its routine maintenance, we're catching it on the tail end of vehicle repair. So it might go in for a complete pump service and chassis service, and then the pump fails, or the electrical system fails, or the brakes fail, et cetera, et cetera. Like you have the breakdown now, what the tanker needs, which, for it to pass this year, for 2020, its pump, it needs its pump rebuilt, I'm sorry, repaired again, which it was just done, I think, three years ago. Engine 2 needs electrical issues, the driver's seat and some other stuff for that to pass inspection, and Rescue 6 needs its suspension for it to pass the 2020 inspection. So if any part gets denied, the, I can tell you right now, what has always been in the budget, as you can see, will not fix. It's almost that amount just to fix those three trucks alone without even touching the budget.
It's a shame, because that's a sum of money that put aside in capital reserve for three or four years, and we could be buying, talking about new trucks.
Well, as I stated to the board, per the board's request, the town administrator should get a proposal for, to replace two of the oldest apparatus. Either way, they have to get fixed. If the town was fortunate enough in March to get a truck approved, you wouldn't see it for another 12 months anyway. So the trucks need to get repaired. With, just keep in the back of the mind, and I've been saying this for years, that line item, what you see there is what you're gonna probably see every year, because we're gonna be chasing it until we start replacing these older apparatus.
All right, anybody else have any questions?
Move to include the draft fire budget in the town's draft budget.
Second, with, for discussion and just, I think I do this at the beginning of every meeting, but now we're on to the sort of larger budgets, is where, as Jim just said, we've accepted it to put it in draft, but we are gonna have to do a full roll-up of the entire budget to get somewhere, so.
That, like I said, the increases, everything was clearly explained to the board, the reasons why.
Yep.
Which is why we're accepting it for the draft.
Which is fine.
Yep.
As written, instead of asking you to go back and make changes.
No, that's fine.
Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And Police Department proposed budget?
By the way, is tonight, or do we have another night of budgets coming up?
This is it.
This is it?
This is the last one.
This is it. Captain, good evening, Board, Mike Stewart, Police Chief. What you should have in front of you is the 2020 proposed budget for the Police Department.
All right, so of course I'm going to have to ask you, vehicle lease, looks like you're pumping that up. I'm assuming this is because we have one or more cruisers that are retired or retireable?
Yep, so I was hoping to answer that one last, but we'll go with that one first. It actually just so happens, I was gonna mention it to the board tonight, actually I had a representative come in this afternoon, one of the sales guys for one of the local companies that builds the cruisers, not one that we typically use, and he had brought up actually a good point. The 2020 cars that are coming out, they have one that's a hybrid, it's half gas, half hybrid, and the other one is just a straight model, but he had told me that there's an increase that I was not aware of, because the 2020's pricing is not available, so I used what we used on the last purchase. He's telling me that it's anywhere from $5,000 to $7,000 more than what I budgeted for, for the overall thing, so that the payment wouldn't change by much, but it might go up a little bit.
That's, that's just because stuff costs more? Is that what he's?
That's, yeah, basically is what it's coming down to. I don't have the pricing for the 2020's. I know that they've gone up, I don't know how much.
The hybrids are more expensive anyway.
Yeah, and I think you can still order it without that, but I think, I tried looking earlier, New Hampshire, I think, is offering a grant.
Oh, good.
If you do a hybrid, they'll give you back a percentage of money if you do do a hybrid, which I'd be completely open to. So yeah, to answer your question, I have several cars that should be out of service. I've got one right now that is temporarily out of service, just because the repair bill would be too much to fix it.
Yeah, so I mean, we got into this thing where we, we're going every other year now for a vehicle?
No.
Not this, I'm putting in, again, we got one.
But we had been.
We had been, yes.
Yeah, so everybody just needs to realize, you do that, that looks good, you know, when we do the accounting, but at the same time, we still have aging cars that are going in for maintenance, and, you know, literally the duct tape chewing gum scenario, right, with some of these cars? So, you know, the, I see most, most of the budget is flat.
Yeah, a handful of things went up, cost of things. I can go through each one of the ones that I did go up on if you'd like, or if you have questions on the ones that I did go up on.
Looks like we need more bullets.
So I added, for the ammunition line, the .319, I actually added related equipment to that, because a lot of the lighting systems that are on, some of the firearms are obsolete, they're not working, and some of the lighting systems aren't there at all, so I want to be able to use that money out of that to do that.
Cool.
Chief, your largest increase is in your full-time officer line.
Correct.
I was under the assumption last year that you're basically carrying a position that was empty, because you were having a hard time filling it.
So, partially true, yes. The reason why we're going up so much on the full-time salary is currently, I hate to admit this publicly, I do not have a sergeant. We have a sergeant's position open, we have a corporal's position that's open, so that's in taking that and increasing to cover those positions, and then also to make sure that we're being compliant with the matrix, with some of the different certificates and different things that offices are getting. That's really nothing there, but once we fill that position, the one that we didn't fill from last year, that money's all gonna be gone, and there's gonna be nothing there. That's why, that's why I jumped up higher on that one. And the same thing with the part-time budget. If you look at what was spent this year for the part-time, you can see that I only had $1,477 left.
No, that's what you over-spent.
Over. All right, well, the other day when I ran this, I still had $1,400.
No, it makes sense. I was gonna comment, that $30,000 is less than the price of a full-time officer.
Correct.
And I was wondering how it worked in there, but the fact that it's accumulation of different.
It's accreditation, prosecution, sergeant, corporal.
Right. That makes sense.
That's where all those come from.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I would add, and this was an idea I brought to the chief to kind of chew on, is perhaps pursuing a warrant article in March to fund vehicle maintenance costs, you know, from the, from the fund balance. So in other words, these cars that are out there, which, you know, are in dire need of the repair, maybe the town would vote to start a fund with money that's on hand, so that the.
To create a capital reserve fund?
Yeah, yeah.
Or a revolving account?
A revolving fund.
Revolving account.
So, so in other words, they can, you know, be dipping in there to keep some of the older vehicles on the road, so the maintenance cost and the need for, you know, additional leases going down the road, we'd be able, we'd be able to cut a lot of that, but in the town would have a say in, if we do that, so.
I think that's a wonderful idea. I think that for the first year or something like that, we would have to leave the money in the budget, and I will make the motion to add this to the draft budget in a minute. However, usually those get funded by the end of the year, on expended fund balance.
Yeah, right.
So we'd have to increase the budget to make sure it can get through the year, and then, then keep our fingers crossed, I mean, he's the most miserest of police chiefs that I've ever met, that, so, you know, there's the possibility of having money left over at the end of the year to fund something like that. I'd have no problem with signing that.
Yeah, I mean, we can approach that in a couple of months.
And I would just call him fiducially conscious.
No, we don't.
As opposed to.
Right, right. No, I'm talking about the money.
Oh.
But the, I mean, it's, it's an idea, I wouldn't want to change anything on your draft budget right now, about that.
As a matter of fact, I'll make a motion to.
No, but a warrant article isn't to that idea.
Right.
It wouldn't affect next year.
To come from the fund balance.
Yes. Yes, you may start now.
Try number four. I'll move to increase the fire department draft budget and the town's draft budget.
I'm sorry, we are dealing with police.
Sorry, the police.
And we're not increasing, we are including?
I said including.
No, you said increase.
My sinuses have been filling up, I sat next to him.
So would you mind repeating?
I'll second whatever that motion.
I will move to, I will move to add the draft police budget to the draft town budget.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, but Nancy, what's your deadline for warrant articles?
July 14th is the last day, really.
Not July?
I'm sorry, January.
Everybody's all over the place up here tonight.
We got November, we got July. Nobody likes January.
So it's January 14th?
January 14th is the very last day for petitioned articles. I've gotta get it up to DRA and get it going for the.
So essentially, January 14th, and I believe in past, either last year or two years ago, the fire department did something similar, so you could borrow language, right, from that warrant?
I think we should do one for the fire department and one for the police department.
Or just one for both?
We'll know. Well, no.
Because then you could have money, unexpended funds from the fire department going in, and going to?
You've got to keep them separate.
Yeah, they have to.
Okay.
And the other thing, I know both Chiefs are talking about lease agreements. I can't do a warrant article unless I have all those figures for the lease payments.
Just need, excuse me, I sent an email to the manufacturer, money approved in the lease.
Yeah, but they'll, they'll have all the lease agreement payments and stuff? Okay. Yeah, I did get that. You better.
Do the Chiefs agree with the idea of the selectmen putting in revolving accounts?
Putting it in front of the voters.
I'm not sure it would be a revolving account.
No cross-contamination here, please.
The fire department does not have a problem with my brother-in-arms here. Just keep in mind that routine service on a fire truck is almost $1,000. So, i- i- if it's in the same account, one of these trucks?
Yeah, no, can we?
No, we already said separate accounts.
We're not doing that.
Yep.
That horse should not leave the bar.
We, we already agreed two accounts.
I don't have a problem with that. It makes it easier on the fire department's side, and I'm sure it makes it easier on the Police Department's side.
And I appreciate the Board going forward with that.
So, but I'm, I would put it back to the department heads to draft, put the first draft together and get it to Nancy, and we'll take a look at it, so.
With, with the help of your liaisons who?
Is that the warrant articles?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, we can kind of follow suit with the others.
Well, that's what I mean, is there's stuff, if you look at old warrants, there's language.
All right, so?
I'm bending the wheel.
So we'll be, we'll be putting the warrant out for it, thank you.
Thanks.
Either Chief have anything else for the Board that you're waiting on?
No, ma'am.
Would you like to step up now?
I don't have it in my hands, but you guys have it.
Is this for the telecommuting agreement?
Yes, ma'am.
We have all seen a proposed form for a telecommuting agreement between town and qualified employees, which would be employees who would have work that they could potentially do remotely, along with security measures, and, you know, these would be people who, for example, the fire department, no offense, gentlemen, you can't, technically you are remote when you're fighting a fire because you're not at the station, but?
Yeah, but you can't telecommute and be an EMT.
Exactly, I mean, you, you actually have to be onsite, so telecommuting wouldn't work for the fire department.
Actually, it might for their bookkeeping.
They don't have a bookkeeper.
Well, no, their bookkeep?
So, so can I jump in here?
Yeah.
I, I just feel us going shh in time as of the essence. Basically, we're leaving it up to the department heads. So, joining the 21st century, we have at least one employee right now who can be a benefit to the town to do some telecommuting, so we have a draft telecommuting agreement, which we're going to make part of the town's templates, forms, and the first one will be with the PD, right?
Right.
We're getting that?
Correct.
We, we don't need to name the individual, but I would, would motion to adopt as drafted the Newton Town telecommuting agreement.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And again, I would just throw it out there that the selectmen are not picking these people, it's a department head recommendation, and then we, we discuss the merits of doing it as always, as long as it's in the best interest of the town.
All right, our next item under proposed budget would be financial administration and updated.
So that's the Police Department, I'm on?
Right, so it, it's the financial administration, but it was updated for technology to be done at the Police Department.
Right. I know the Police Chief has gone back to his seat at the back of the room. Are you prepared for?
Well, why don't I try and speak to these? Could be, okay?
Yeah, Diane can make this go faster.
Yep. So basically, they need to have their Windows 7 replacements done, so you have, there's a statement of work there that you, you've already said that the quote was fine at your last meeting, so the Windows 7 replacement, which you're signing, is a statement of work. The MS365 migration is what they need in order to be compliant with, for a security, so they need that as well, and that you were okay with. Really, the only new thing that we didn't know about was the quote for the hosting the IMC, and that is, that was new, so we had to add all that into there. All of that added into the financial administration budget, that's why it's increased. The IMC hosting is what they do, it's hosted up at the Rockingham Dispatch, no, Rockingham.
I was just going to say, what's IMC?
It's where the database is, where they look things up, so?
Chief will explain.
Yeah, I don't want to get, don't want to get too technical in that.
IMC is Information Management System, it's basically what we use for our, I won't say a CAD system, but it's our records management. If we have an arrest, an incident report, a name, it all gets stored inside this. What's been happening over the last, well, since I've been here, is we hold on to historical data, we hold it, but we don't share it.
Okay.
That information really should be shared, if we're not sharing it, that means no one's sharing it with us. Part of our job is to communicate. Rockingham Dispatch had probably eight years ago, went out and started recruiting PDs to come in, and they dispatch for us now, but they also, if we pull a car over, we have to run the license plate, the license and all that. What we do currently is we run it through the computer in the car, or they run it through the radio, then they have to input that information into the computer, then they have to take a thumb drive, and then bring it into the station, and input it inside the computer in the station.
Okay.
So what's happening is, the memory on the computers is saving it, the memory in the officer's computer is now saving it, now the server is now saving it. So we keep this redundant, which is fine, it's just a lot of work. What Rockingham's doing is they're hosting, and they're allowing us to use their mobile switch, it's called, and basically what it is, is now when the officer runs the plate, it automatically uploads into the computer, and that's it, it's done, there's no more saving.
And there is access to that information from both the vehicles and from the station?
Correct. Not only is there access from the station and the cars, but we also now have access to all of Rockingham County, meaning any town. If the towns agree to share the information, that's why I said we weren't, we don't share currently, because we're not part of that network, but once we get on it, say, for example, I'm going to use, I'll use Kingston. If Kingston's on that network, if Kingston had stopped that person, I can see all their stops and all their interactions with that person. Officer safety, that's huge, right now we don't have it. You have to ask, and, you know, that will go all the way up to Newington and up that direction, whoever's in Rockingham County.
And the other benefit to this is the fact that the, this data is, would no longer be stored on a thumb drive, on a vehicle computer, or on the computers at the station.
Not only that, as you, as the Board, I'm sure is fully aware, the, storing the information's one thing, you have to maintain that equipment. The server that we have, since I've been here, we're on our second server. The server, I know the license is going to be expiring shortly, if not, if we hadn't just recently renewed it, but the server doesn't meet federal requirements on certain levels, so by going to a virtual server, we lose all that, and now we're not maintaining a server all the time. It just, it helps, again, it goes into that 21st century thing.
All right, sounds good.
I hope I answered questions and didn't confuse more.
No, it worked for me, and that's really all that we have for the increase. Now, we're, what is the difference between what was proposed before and what is proposed now? Is it the 13840?
I, I believe so, let me just quickly check that.
Or, well, pretty close to it, because the IT contracted service, that has the increase of 134, so there is a few minor updates, but, but I can understand it. Anyone have any comments or motions?
I guess you're looking for a motion to update?
Yep, to include. Yep, to accept the revised?
To accept the revised draft financial administration budget?
Yep. Do I have a?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And before we move on to our next one, I see we still have one member in the audience.
You still need to, those statements of work, so we'll need to have signatures for those, those three things?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that in one second, it's not part of the accepting of the budget, so.
Okay.
Are you here for anything in particular, sir?
Yes, ma'am, the, I think you could go a little further, because you guys have attached it?
Yes, that is correct. It is, let's see?
It's towards the bottom.
It's towards the bottom, I think. Yeah, that's L. You know what, in, in the interest of sending you home? I would like to go out of order to L.
You're already out of order.
You're out of order.
You're all out of order.
Pretty much, you've been out of order since you started.
If I understand this correctly, we have two?
That is correct.
All right, so I have one for each of you. So these are sealed bids for digitizing maps.
Anybody get a sharp object? Thank you.
Take care, Chief.
This is a very sealed, sealed?
And I, I will tell you, as they are opening them up, we will likely see you again, because typically we open to announce who they are from, and then we pass on to our secretary to compile, and a, apples to apples of features and what was proposed, and that then gets discussed at the following meeting. Okay, so that's why I said we will likely see you again. But what this will do is it'll at least ease your mind as to the fact that we did receive it and open it if you are one of these two objects.
It should be giving you 20 minutes.
I know.
Okay, so, who'd you open?
Ty and Bond.
So we have a proposal from Ty and Bond?
And we have a proposal for CAI Technologies.
All right, so, two digital mapping proposals, the proposers have been identified, and now Diane will work her magic on those, and have them for us for our next meeting, correct?
Probably not. No, I'm not here.
Oh, that's right, you're on vacation.
I'm on vacation, so.
So it might be our second meeting in January.
See what I, what I can accomplish.
Okay, but you will be notified when we are prepared to discuss it, or I should say, both senders will be notified so that they can appear if they want to. All right? Thank you. All right, so let's clean, finish up the 2020 proposed budget so we can close these books. We now have assessing updated.
Personnel administration.
Oh, yes, I missed that one. Personnel administration, is this separate budget law?
This is under?
What is personnel administration considered executive?
Under other, other government.
Ah, yes, dental, FICA, health, Medicare, retirement, short-term disability. And we have an increase of $31,000, the increase on retirement, health, and a little bit on the others. Now, do we know why the increase on retirement? Is that a percentage of pay?
They get, they have a percentage, yep.
Okay, then that would explain the increase.
Yep.
And we're getting a discount on our short-term disability for next year? Is that why we're going down?
We actually, I think we got a credit from Primex on that.
And I, I like to make note of when we do get things like that.
Yeah, I was just going to say, didn't, didn't we get a credit for having completed all of certain?
We get that too.
Yeah.
But that's on the, the workers' comp, I think.
Oh, okay.
All right, so anyone have any questions, comments, concerns on the proposed budget?
No, I would move to add the personnel administration draft budget to the full town draft budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, our next one is the assessing.
Which one now?
Assessing.
Yep, we're on assessing now.
Okay, so we updated the assessing budget to include the statistical update that you voted at the last meeting? Because originally, it was just the assessing contract?
Yep, and now that we have the approved?
Yep.
Statistical, we had to add that to our assessing budget.
Correct, yep.
So, anyone have any questions?
Move to add the assessing draft budget to the town draft budget.
Second.
Seconded by Matt. Any further comments, questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then executive is our final budget item.
And this one is mostly salaries and town report, office supplies, you know, your, things that we need to keep our office running.
And of course, with the newly elected selectmen, the training budget is going up a little bit this, for next year as well.
Right.
Actually, that's, that's not bad for?
It's hard to know which trainings people are going to want to go to, but we've been doing pretty good staying close to it.
Yeah, I know, my grants training put us over.
And we might want to consider?
Go get a grant.
Yeah.
Go get a grant to pay for it.
You cannot get a grant to pay for something that you've already paid for.
True, yeah, yeah.
I will move to add the executive budget, draft budget, to the town draft budget.
Second.
Seconded by Matt. Any further discussion, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that concludes our 2020 proposed budget. Next up for that would be compiling it all together for the Board to review as a whole at a soon-to-be next meeting.
Like January 7th, yeah.
Yeah, soon-to-be next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think what, you know, from what I've seen, there are places we can cut. I, I would go back to, I think I said at the beginning of this, that, you know, Fire Police Highway, I wouldn't, I wouldn't see much of an opportunity to cut any one of those, because those are the three, the big ones to me, that if you see municipal services that people expect in the town, those If you see municipal services that people expect in the town, those are the three I think we need to embrace. But I don't see why we can't propose, you know, a flat budget once again. Salaries are gonna go up, obviously. We've done reviews. We've locked all of those in, but I think there are opportunities to take a look at what we actually have spent and reduce. So that's what I'd be looking for.
Working up the sum of the numbers that we agreed tonight in draft form to add to draft form? Some of them would... I mean, $60,000 is not going to be balanced by conservation giving up $150 and rec giving up $150. Planning Board already gave up $1,000.
I'll start somewhere. So we have to roll it up, because now we're not gonna be looking at individuals where I would expect...
We're gonna be looking at it as a whole.
Yeah.
Correct.
Just so the board knows, I did get from three or four departments the needs for the buildings. So we put those on for the January 7th meeting. I would appreciate it, because you guys like to do priority, what you feel is most important. I would like it if you could look at those.
For deeding?
No, the property maintenance.
Okay, you said deed, right?
No. I don't know what I said.
She was referring... Wow, everybody's tongue-twisting tonight, huh?
I know what she's talking about. I just... I was thrown because I thought I heard deeding.
Yeah, I thought I did, too, and then when she kept talking...
But I saw your email, so I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, you guys talked about prioritizing. I don't know what I'm looking for for monies for the Warren article. We had that meeting a couple of meetings ago where we were asked to do a Warren article for some of these repairs. I don't know what we're looking to fix, so I don't have pricing. So if you guys could look at that and see what your priorities are, and then maybe we can go from there and come up with a number. And none of this, those spreadsheets have nothing in the general government budget at this time.
Right.
All right, so moving on to our next item, we have a 2020 proposal.
Don't forget, you need to do those statement of words.
The... We need... Oh, the...
The ones you told me.
Documents that were the links in the agenda. The documents are actual forms and proposals that we need to authorize me to sign.
Correct.
Okay. Move to authorize the chair to sign the water quality monitoring?
No, I was talking about...
The window seven replacements?
ECI, the window seven replacements, the MS 365 migration.
Oh, okay.
And the quote... And the IMC hosting.
Move to authorize the chair to sign those three documents as necessary.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we can spell out what those three documents are in the motion?
Yes, you can spell them out in the paperwork book. We all know what we're talking about here.
Okay.
All right, now the 2020 proposal to conduct water quality monitoring.
I believe that's... No, maybe it isn't. Yeah, no, I don't know what that one is. Oh, that's the Gillespie one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's Gillespie.
For the testing and stuff, we did not have a figure at the time, I think, for Pete to put into his budget for the water testing, the monitoring at the transfer station.
And the surrounding properties or...
Yeah, yeah. So I think Kim and I included it. Maybe it's in the transfer station. Maybe he... I think he did have a figure we were estimating, but we did get the cost.
All right.
And I'm not sure if Kim updated that one or not, or maybe it's okay. Yeah, I think we need to, you know, if you wanna increase this one a little. I think we had... Oh, maybe it is.
Site monitoring, it was set to $17,000.
We had 17, yep, so maybe that's okay.
And we have this... So this should work in. It gives us that little bit of buffer for the potential added tests or more frequent tests.
Yep.
Based on the latest federal guidelines?
Yep.
State guidelines?
State guidelines.
State guidelines.
Yeah.
Yep, and again, that's...
May not be changed.
That's estimated, too, because we don't know what the state might come back and say, "We want you to do this, this, and this," so...
All right. Sounds good, so do we need to accept, sign?
I was just gonna say, I believe that's a...
Oh, there is a signature for one, so it'd be...
Move to have the chair sign the Gillespie contract for water monitoring.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, our next item, 2020 snow plowing rate policy.
So I would like to move to go into non-public under 91A3C for reputation. It'll be a quick one, I promise.
Do I have...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is at 8:09 PM, and it is...
So I think... I thought we came up with a policy, a rule of thumb, whatever you wanna call it, a couple of years ago, right?
What did we do with Town Hall and Christmas Eve?
We close at 4:00.
Well, they was on weekend. No, not on weekends. Monday, was it?
Town Hall closes at 4:00 anyway.
This time, it's on Wednesday night, Thursday.
Yeah, that is what I'm talking about, Thursday nights. It's...
Second, what are we looking at?
And what do you guys do when Christmas Eve is on a Thursday?
You don't stay till 8:00.
What does the policy say we do?
Christmas Eve is on a Tuesday. Wednesday is Christmas.
Yeah, but we're just, for the sake of argument, Christmas Eve is on a Thursday. You don't stay till 8:00, correct? What do we make you stay until?
Well, I was gonna ask the... Yeah, go ahead.
That would be our day off. We would have the Town Hall would be closed because Friday we're normally closed, so Thursday would be the day we would celebrate Christmas.
You're coming up with a new proposal.
Only if you're in a position that gets paid time-worn.
Yeah. I might.
I know.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Town of Newton, it's been my privilege to serve you for the last five years. The... So back to my question. The policy that exists now...
What I'm looking for.
You're looking it up? So we had a run rules if Thursday... Because the reason Lisa's asking about Thursdays is because Town Hall's open 12 to 8:00 on a normal Thursday.
Right.
On a normal Thursday, the transfer station is open 12 to 6:45.
Yep, right.
Okay, so we don't make you guys stay until 8:00, correct?
Correct.
So I don't know what it said about that, because one would think... Because I don't... I think if you extended your hours the other way, you're not gonna get anybody, because they're not gonna know. So if you started at 10:00 on a Tuesday or a Thursday, you know, people aren't gonna find you, so it's almost not worth doing that.
But if they did that, we could put it on the website, and also, they are getting paid. We're not paying them for not being there.
Yeah, the more important thing is the people who load up their trucks.
And show.
And show up on Christmas Eve. Now, granted, most of us have something better to do on Christmas Eve, but somebody might have some trash.
Usually, those are all the creatures with green furry skin. Usually called Grinches.
Right. But I thought for sure we dealt with this already.
We dealt with when the holiday appears on particular days. We did not deal with when the day before a holiday, such as Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve.
Well, I thought we did, because I remember Jim saying quite strongly that New Year's Eve was not a holiday. It's...
Neither was Christmas Eve.
Right.
Exactly.
That's what I thought you said.
They are not a holiday.
Yeah, and not to go back to, you know, the guy in the Grinch, but, you know... I don't know. I think that...
However, one of the...
Whatever we do, we have to do it forever, basically.
Exactly.
I mean, Town Hall this Wednesday should be open till 4:00.
Not this Wednesday.
It's Christmas.
It's Christmas.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
This Tuesday will be open till 4:00, because...
Well, it's normal...
Right.
Normal...
Yeah.
That's normal hours.
Yeah.
However...
It's Thursday that affects Town Hall.
When it falls on a Thursday, or if you're the transfer station, and...
I swear we wrote something. I thought we did.
No, like I said, we did this for the holiday.
Right, right.
Not for the non-holiday or day before a major holiday.
I thought we covered these.
We did not cover them in a...
So if we do nothing...
They will work those hours or take them off.
Somebody will be standing... Well, they could always take it off, correct? But somebody will have to be standing there until 6:45 with tumbleweeds going by, because they're probably done legitimately by 4:00, I would say, on Christmas Eve. On New Year's Eve, I could be the only one, but I think on New Year's Eve, we don't touch that one.
Yeah, it's not...
Because it's... New Year's Eve is different.
Yeah, that's a party night.
You know, Christmas Eve is, you know... You know, Christmas Eve is, you know, people are going somewhere typically, they're going to church, they're going to the family's house, or whatever.
So I would be okay with a policy that says, Christmas Eve, that we would close all departments.
Yeah.
By 4:00 PM, that would cover Town Hall being normal, and then those that into, that put, or except if Christmas Eve, yeah, even on Thursday, you guys would have the day off anyways, because that would be Christmas for you guys.
Remember, you close it, you pay it.
Well, you can make the exception that people can use their PTO.
But I think back to stuff we've talked about already, if you're a, if you're a part-timer, you.
Yeah, actually, if you work at the transfer station, you probably.
You're hourly.
Are not eligible for.
Right, exactly. So if we, if we close the transfer station after four hours, you only get paid for four hours, we don't pay you for, because you only get paid what you're scheduled.
Exactly.
Yeah.
However, if we close, like if there's a blizzard and we close Town Hall, people still get paid. Especially if we.
I don't think so, right, not the hourlies, right?
They get prorated, even the part-time hourlies. They do get paid on a prorated basis on the above holidays, provided they must work the regularly scheduled day before and after the holiday. That's the only condition for them to be paid, so if Christmas is, and that's just for holidays, we don't have anything in here that says, what happens if the town closes, do we pay them? You know, say we close the transfer station because of severe weather, do we pay? I mean, who do we pay? We don't pay anybody.
So.
Actually, no, we would be responsible for paying the people who would be working that day, because we chose to close it.
So can we do this? We severely have to update this policy for these occurrences, because Lisa makes a good point, weather, whatever, weather as in W-E-A-T-H-E-R, we have to have that on there. But for the purposes of December 24th, can I make a motion to close the transfer station at 4:00 PM? And pay people for only the amount of hours they work during that day? Can I do that with, under the law? I think I can.
I'm pretty sure you can, just pay them for the hours they work.
Yeah.
So you're going to lay them off for three hours?
I'm not laying anybody off.
You can't look at somebody who's getting paid as.
Now, all of our employees, all of our transfer station employees.
Yeah.
Are scheduled, okay?
Right.
They have flexible up to X number of hours. Not, we guarantee you X number of hours every week, we will pay you up to X number of hours. So if we schedule them for December 24th, for noon to 4:00, then that's what they're scheduled for, and that's all we pay them for.
I'll ask Nancy, where do you think the Department of Labor will come down on that?
I don't think so, I think this is fair, and I think what you used to do with Easter, you would let them close on the Sunday, if they wanted to work on Friday, they could work and get their pay that way. That's why I think Pete was saying they'd come in earlier.
Or use it as PTO or anything else, I mean, we used to, we would do the same thing with Easter Sunday.
However, most of these people are not eligible for PTO.
Doesn't matter, the point is, is we're not paying them for hours not worked.
Right.
That's my point, because they are hourly, they get paid when we schedule them, and we will schedule them for up to X number of hours. For December 24th, we have determined that they will be scheduled for 12, or whatever it is.
12 to 4, is what I'm thinking.
12 to 4. So they will get paid for four hours, whoever happens to actually be scheduled to work that day will be scheduled for 12 to 4:00, instead of 12 to 6:45.
Yeah, fine. I think, I think the town can afford the two and a half hours.
But why spend it when it is not necessary to spend it? It's Christmas Eve, not Christmas.
So, and then, so what we do is we turn around, and then, you know, the argument would become, who else in town do we pay because we're closing early on Christmas? And I think what we've decided in the past, and I'm going to start my timer, because I've only got five minutes left of my life that I want to devote to this, hold on, here we go, okay, starting five minutes. It would get out of hand, you know? So basically, what we're doing, and I don't think this is contrary to anything the Department of Labor would say, is, as Lisa just said, we're going to, we're going to schedule the transfer station to be open for only four hours that day. If you work, you get paid for four hours.
So you'll get paid for every hour you work?
Yeah.
And that you get scheduled for.
Yeah.
And trust me, when it comes to part-timers, that's how it works, even in retail.
I realize, however, there's a different, I mean, you can vote, it's going to be obviously approved, it will simply not be unanimous.
So I never got a second.
So I will second that motion, and is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That passes. So the, please inform the transfer station manager that the board has voted to close the transfer station from 4:00 PM onward on Tuesday, the 24th. So only schedule people till 4:00.
So the, in New Year's Eve, we're not touching, is what we're, no motion to change New Year's Eve.
No, but I have a request, and you're going to shoot me, and I'll make this really quick. On the day after Christmas, Town Clerk's office is closed, Diane's on vacation, it's just me and Kim, and maybe the building inspector.
And the planning board will be open?
My whole thing, I don't mind coming in and working, but being open for the public is not going to benefit anybody, because I can't, they're all going to be coming in to see the Town Clerk or tax collector.
What date are we talking about?
The day after Christmas, that Thursday. So being a Thursday night, when normally he had 8:00, oh, just, just so you know, it'd be me and Kim, but Kim's leaving around 1:00, because she has personal things with her husband, and she's putting in for PTO. So she's going to get her time and use her PTO for the rest of that time. My question is mostly, like, I can come in, it's not a big deal, I can keep the door unlocked, but I'm not going to be able to help the people, I don't have a problem with that, because I've got plenty of work I can do. What do you want to do about the building inspector? They shouldn't be here till 8:00 that night.
Okay, so the only ones we have are hourly people in the building department.
Yep.
Okay, the only other employees who are scheduled to be here after, say, 4:00.
Me, Kim, and Jim.
Right, because we're talking about after 4:00?
Right.
All right, so the only other people, employees who are scheduled to be here after 4:00 are the bookkeeper and the administrator, correct?
And Jim.
And the planning board administrator. So I would be willing to pose the same thing that we do for Easter in the transfer station. If you want to take PTO time to use, we will close Town Hall from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. So only be open the day after Christmas from 12:00 to 4:00. So I will make that motion.
Second.
And that's only if there, if the employees will be on PTO. So we are enabling the three employees who would normally.
Right, I get it.
Be there, so if the three employees.
The problem is, the problem is, and I, like I said, I don't care, I'll be the only one downstairs.
Yeah, so.
Well, at that point.
It's not going to benefit the public.
But Nancy, at that point, if, when you're the only one in the building, you can take PTO and close Town Hall.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
That's what I'm saying.
So, yeah, I mean, that's it, we've been here before, I'm sure we're not the only town that goes through this.
We've never been this short of staff.
But, I mean, it's just the way it is, and people are going to come in, and I know Mary Jo usually puts something out, so everybody knows her window is closed. And she'll probably have something on the window, and unfortunately, you have to be the bearer of bad news if they're coming in.
And I don't mind, it's just pointless to be open when I can't help anybody, and I'm in the building by myself.
But that's not true, right? Because you could help people, because there might be some.
Oh, I could help other people, but they're all going to mostly be in for the Town Clerk.
Right, but I mean, that's just kind of the way it is, where people, if, if they're watching, I'm sure, again, millions of people watching right now, they should understand that we have duly elected officials that make their own hours. So the Board of Selectmen makes the hours for these guys sitting right here, but the Town Clerk is elected to make their own hours, so what they decide to do, we don't have.
And the same is true with Planning Board.
And the same with Planning Board, there are several.
So we have no say in what hours you're working.
Yeah.
Planning Board is, the administrative assistant for the Planning Board falls under the purview of the Planning Board. The Board of Selectmen do not have the authority any more than we do over the assistant tax collector. So that office, we're not concerned with, we are concerned with our offices, which at this point is bookkeeper and town administrator. And bookkeeper will be gone at what time?
About 1:00.
About 1:00?
Right.
All right, so again.
So would this be okay for the building inspector to do 12 to 4:00 as well? He's not going to be here at 8:00 that night, nobody's going to be here.
If the Town Hall is closed, I mean, he can do his hours if he has hours, doing inspections, doing code enforcement, doing paperwork, you know, whatever it is he needs to do, he does not necessarily need to be in the office.
Okay, okay.
Makes sense?
Even with the town administrator in her office, the outside door does not need to be.
Open.
Unlocked.
Well, it does.
It does, if we're open.
I gotta wait on people, I can't wait on them.
Not if we're closing Town Hall, what he's saying is, you could be in your office, lock the door at 4:00, it doesn't mean you have to leave.
Right, right.
So, just to throw a little wrench in this, so she will be here by herself if the building inspector is not around, after 1:30.
Right.
Yes.
And you're cool with that? Her panic button doesn't work, by the way.
Oh, don't say that.
I'll, she can borrow the one from up here, but she won't be, the building will not be empty.
She will be the only one downstairs by herself.
And I don't have a problem with that, I really don't, but I just want you to know, it's bare bones here.
That happens in a lot of businesses, when there's only one person in the building.
And they're usually locked in or something, yeah.
No, I will use my husband as an example, he's a.
He's got a lot of wrenches there, and he can throw at people, but anyways, okay.
But he's still a sole proprietor. We're waiting on the clerk.
I.
Is there a buzzer on that door?
So, do we need a motion to close?
There is, there is a doorbell that you could ring.
Doorbell, so there is a doorbell, so we might, we might consider letting Nancy lock the door. If somebody needs to see the town administrator, they can hit the doorbell, she, so I mean, it's enough that you can say.
I'm fine, I'm fine.
Yeah, she looks out the window and goes, okay, yeah, the guy in the.
Just be careful what you say here.
Valaklav or carrying the axe, no.
I, I'm fine.
Yeah, she's fine, so do we need a motion to close Town Hall on the 26th?
My permission, yes.
Or just a permission?
I'll stay here till 4:00, 12 to 4:00.
You're good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good.
All right, do we need a motion for that, is what I'm asking? I think just an agreement from the board, which you have.
Yeah, I don't think we're doing it, yeah.
So we're good, you just send out the notice that Town Hall will be closed the day after.
And the building inspector can leave at 4:00, he doesn't get paid only if he's here.
Right, well, he wouldn't be coming in till 4:00, so he just won't come into the building.
No, he came in at 12:00 today.
Yeah, but.
We'll work it out, we'll work it out.
So, yeah, just let him know that Town Hall will be closed to the public.
I got it, yep.
Okay?
Yep.
Perfect, let's move on to our next item.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is review contract for MS4 compliance.
All right, so we have two contracts for the MS4 from RPC and Mike Fignelli, who helps us with all the reporting and testing and all of that. So, yep.
Move to have the chair sign the contracts with KB Podner and RPC as regards the MS4 compliance.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Was that in?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Annual payment request for fire warden and permit writers.
Move to pay the annual stipend, I believe it's stipends, as opposed to hourly, for the fire warden and permit writer, writers as requested.
Second.
Any discussion?
Did you say stipend, Jim?
And it's not a stipend, actually, they're getting paid for hours.
It's permits, they get paid permits.
Okay, I said it was a stipend, because I didn't think it was hourly.
Well, they say hours, but it's per, per permit, yes, so they get paid $3.00 per permit, right, if they issue 11 permits.
So that's a fee.
Yes, it's a fee.
Yeah.
So we need to pay them their fees.
I second it.
All right, so it was a motion, and second, to pay their fees. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is request to carry over P2, PTO.
This is the Town Clerk, Deputy Town Clerk would like to carry over some PTO, I think it was, wasn't much.
Yeah, mine's not opening for some reason.
It's just slow.
How much PTO do you know?
Excuse me, give me a minute.
Probably don't want to.
Oh, okay, no, I, I see it. And so I would be okay, we've done this for other employees in the past, I would be willing to.
Move to allow the employee to carry over PTO.
Now, however, carry over or bank?
Carry over.
Carry over.
Okay, we do understand what the difference is, right?
Yes.
So they would use it next year.
On top of the rest of their PTO, instead of banking the PTO. Is there a particular reason that we want to carry this over that?
Considering the situation in that office this past year, I can understand.
They were unable to actually utilize it.
Right.
So they shouldn't necessarily be.
Penalized.
Penalized for a situation out of their control.
I don't have a problem with this at all.
Okay, I just wanted to, only because it's not banking, it's carryover, I just kind of wanted to have it explained.
Distinction.
Exactly.
I mean, most people that, even those that don't know the circumstances, it, somebody went above and beyond, and this is our way of saying thank you.
Right, and the employee was unable to utilize PTO as, under normal circumstances, because of it.
So I think you need to put the name in for the person, because Kim needs to know this, who the PTO goes to.
Yeah, it's, it's public information.
As long as there's not an amount.
No, 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 it's just ours.
I would move to approve the request to carry over PTO for Cheryl.
Saunders.
Saunders, Cheryl, so it's been a long night, even though it's only 8:40.
Right.
Sorry, Cheryl, I'm sure she's watching.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, but, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, our next item is.
Can I go back to D, if you don't mind?
Okay, holding elections at the fire rescue station.
So I don't want to make a decision tonight, what I want to make a decision about tonight is bringing in stakeholders to make a decision at our next meeting. So basically, what this would be is, and we've talked about it before in this room, we've talked about it in passing, holding elections, at least the, the next one, at the fire and rescue station. February 11th would be the next opportunity, I already talked to Mary Jo, she said there's no concern about printing of ballots, remember, we had this thing where they had to be for the town warrants and stuff. So obviously, there's a lot of factors here, the first person I talked to was. The first person I talked to was Bob Dismelik. He had zero issue with it. Mary Jo has some concerns, but, you know, like, like all the stakeholders here, they seem to be having, like, pros and cons with it. I was driving around today, and to me, I think it deserves to be discussed, because when it comes to town residents, if I list pros and cons, I don't have any cons for town residents. And at the end of the day, that's why we do things, is for the residents. And the pros for the residents is parking, it's, you know, accessibility, handicap accessibility, lines, when we have lines here that, that stretch all around and into the outside, if we did it right over there, we wouldn't have that. So what I'd like to do is propose that when we hopefully have five board members, next meeting, we can bring in, hopefully, Mary Jo or Cheryl or whatever, Bob Dismelik, the supervisors of the checklist, and the fire chief. A big determining factor to me from the fire chief would be, once he knows what people have to store there, can we store it there? Because when we, originally, before the fire station was built, the chief was telling me he was kind of targeting space that they could lock stuff up, because what I don't want to see happen is bringing stuff back and forth every time you have an election. So anyway, does the board think we can bring people back in on January 7th and discuss it?
Just in referencing the last comment you made.
Yeah.
For both the Town Clerk and the supervisors of the checklist, it is, they would have to shift all of their bookwork back and forth, because they, it has to be immediately accessible. However, most of the work they do is in this building. So it would have to be shifted there for the election, and then shifted back, because they don't work there.
So my question to them would be, what is the amount of that bookwork? Are we talking a couple of binders? Are we talking about 12 boxes of things? Are we, are we in a position where, because here's the fact, is other towns do this. They do it all the time. When I lived in Plastow, I never voted at the Town Hall in Plastow. Kingston, I believe, they vote at the school, right?
Right.
So, so is it a case of, nobody likes change, I understand that? Is it a case of that, or is it a case of, it can be done, we just have to think about what we need to do?
Maybe you could find a truck and some guys to help lug this stuff.
Well, that...
Okay, I think we've got too much conversation going on about it right now, since we do want to involve other stakeholders into this conversation. I have my own personal views, but I'm going to save those for our actual discussion with the stakeholders. I am definitely okay with bringing others in to discuss it. There's no guarantee there will be a decision made at that point. But definitely, let's see who we can get to come in, speak to it, invite the public to come in to speak to it as well, and then see where it goes from there.
Yeah, the only thing I would disagree with is, there should be a decision that night, and I think, you know, the, it's, the decision could be status quo, right?
Yep, or the decision could be to put it on a warrant article.
Yeah, I don't know about that, but...
I'm saying that's a possibility.
But the only thing, I'm agreeing with everything you said, but we need to make a decision that night.
Some kind of a decision.
Some kind of a decision, whether it's status quo or not, so.
But I'm fine with that.
So is that for January 7th?
Yeah.
How busy is January 7th right now? Because I've been hearing a lot of things going on January 7th. I'm thinking, in order to allow enough time for everyone to be heard, that we should go for, what is it, the 14th?
The, no, the next one would be your public hearing for the budgets. That's your January 20th, it's a Monday.
So...
But our next meeting...
That's after.
It's January 7th.
It's after the public hearing.
And after, after the 7th, it's the 21st.
The 21st, there we go, that's the one I meant.
Right.
Well, no.
But the 21st is awfully close to the election.
Yeah, it probably wouldn't be worth it.
You have the public hearing on the 20th, and you have, your Board of Selectmen means on the 21st, on the 20th as well. Your snow day is the 21st. So both meetings are held on the same day.
Yeah.
The 21st, that's what I'm checking.
Typically do that.
However, isn't the election February 11th?
Yes.
So...
So it's January 7th, or we table it and we don't do it. So. Now, we do have four opportunities this year. I just don't, I don't want time to get away from us if we think this is relevant. You know, we do have a hard date for March, what are we doing this year, March 13th?
10th.
Right.
March 10th, because of what we talked about, the address and stuff, but, so I don't know if there are other things that are, are less time sensitive on January 7th, we can bump, but if we're gonna do it, let's do it January 7th. If we can't do it January 7th, we need to talk later on about September, I should know this, September 8th, I believe, is the state primary.
So even if we can't make it for the 7th, for example, it may not be timely enough for the February elections, but it may be timely for the March or the following election. So it still wouldn't hurt for us to have the discussion early?
Yeah.
Earlier the better. I will work with the secretary to see what our agenda looks like.
Okay.
To decide, to determine whether or not we can fit it in. The last thing I want to do is have us all here till 10 o'clock.
Right, right.
And it'll be short notice for a lot of people. But we will see what's in there and see what we can do. Our next item is, let's see, where was I? We opened the bids. Okay, M is our next item.
Madam Chair, I move pursuant to RSA 31:95-B to expend and, to accept and expend unanticipated funds to the food pantry from an anonymous donor in the amount of $300.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, pursuant to RSA 31:95-B to accept and expend unanticipated funds to the food pantry from Paul and Carol Zott in the amount of $100.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Madam Chair, pursuant to RSA 31:95-B to accept and expend unanticipated funds to the food pantry from the American Legion Post Number 34 in the amount of $100.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, pursuant to RSA 31:95-B to accept and expend unanticipated funds to the food pantry from the First Congregational Church of Kingston in the amount of $200.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, other business. We do have announcements. The Town Collector Tax Clerk, I know we beat this to death already, but officially under announcement, the Office of the Town Collector Tax Clerk will be closed.
Tax Collector Town Clerk.
You've got that reversed.
Yeah, there we go. Well, it says Town Collector Tax Clerk on here.
Oh, it does?
You're right, it does.
Thank you, I was reading it.
I thought you kept repeating it. I'm like, how is she doing that?
I'm reading it to make sure I don't trip over my tongue.
That's an office I'm unfamiliar with, but I guess they're gonna be closed.
All right, let me rephrase. The Office of the Tax Collector and Town Clerk will be closed on December 26th.
No registration, vehicle registrations will be done.
Yeah, no vehicle registrations, no real estate taxes.
So pretty much 95% of what...
Nothing.
Won't be there. However, the town administrator...
Yes, I will be here, come visit.
Help you with some stuff.
Careful what you wish for.
Bring coffee.
All right, so the only thing I see left here is signing manifests and our...
Minutes.
Minutes.
You gonna do the minutes first?
No, I don't have an others sheet, right, Diane?
I'm looking at it.
Yeah, it's just...
I was looking for it in the folder.
It didn't come in the folder, I think, yeah?
Okay. Madam Chair, I would announce that on...
Oh, sorry.
December 6, 2019, the board signed the vendor manifest dated December 3, 2019, in the amount of $1,376,153.83, of which $776,877 went towards the December Sanborn Regional School District payment and $5,400, sorry, $545,731 towards the Rockingham County tax payment. I move that we sign the vendor, vendor manifest dated December 17, 2019, in the amount of
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Matt, you wanna?
Yeah, I'll have it in front of me. Which one? I move to encumber $23,992.87 from the 2019 general government building budget to cover 2019 invoices that have not been paid out.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also move to encumber $8,868.59 from the 2019 highway department budget to cover